I have one of our chairman board members here, Byron. Byron, thank you. Stand up everybody. Let him know. From USF. Also, I want to thank you for taking the time to come out. I know everybody's busy, could be doing a lot of things, but I know this, this, I've been in Congress my fifth term, this is going to be a big issue, this thing on Iran. I feel the energy, I see what's going on in Washington. And the reason I ask you, we've been good friends, we've worked together, we've traveled together, I do a lot more times tax and trade, he's an expert on world affairs and foreign affairs, he's at the forefront on this Iran deal. In fact, on Tuesday, in front of his committee he chairs, which we were joking about last night, the committee I'm on Ways and Means is the oldest committee, Foreign Affairs is the second oldest committee that he chairs. But, not by much, but a little bit older. But anyway, Secretary Kerry will be with him on Tuesday as witness in front of his committee that he chairs. So he's at the forefront on this. And my goal why I do town halls, I want to get your input. I tell people I'm humbled as a blue collar kid to be a congressman, but at the end of the day, I treat this, I'm a representative. I need to hear from you. That's why I've got the chairman here, he needs to hear from you. I want him, and the reason I've asked him and his wife to come into town, hear what's on your mind, take your questions. So that's our goal today. And with that, let's give a big round of applause to Chairman Ed Royce.
I must say Marie and I are not too disappointed. I'm from Southern California, so it hasn't rained in a long, long time. We had forgotten what it looked like, but boy, have we been reminded in the last couple of days. But it is, it is great to be here with Vern Buchanan. And I'll just say a few words and then open it up because as Vern said, the main goal is to hear from his constituents on whatever issues. But he's asked me, because for some years now, on the Foreign Affairs Committee, and I run that committee in a very bipartisan way, myself and Eliot Engel have 44 members on the committee. And we try to involve all of them. And we do briefings with all of the ambassadors or foreign ministers that come over, frequently with heads of state, to get their perspectives on these issues. And one of the issues that we've been wrestling with, of course, is the issue of Iran's slow, determined march to obtain this capability. And the conclusion that Eliot and Engel and I reached in the last session of Congress was that we should come up with an approach that was coercive diplomacy. And it was passage of legislation that would force the ayatollah to make a real choice between economic collapse or real compromise on his program. And we worked with the Treasury Department, there was a deputy in Treasury who had in fact put those types of sanctions on North Korea. And his proposition, this was Stuart Levy, he caught North Korea in the act of counterfeiting hundred dollar bills, which is a very aggressive thing to do. And so he slapped sanctions from Treasury on North Korea. And the basic idea was, he froze all the bank accounts. If you wanted to do business with the United States, and you were a bank, then if you were the Bank of Delta Asia, and that was the first account that he froze, then you had a choice. You were either going to do business with North Korea, or you were going to do business with the US, but you couldn't do both. So you can imagine what that bank in Macau did. And that's where they were originally laundering the hundred dollar bills. They froze the accounts. And so did 10 other banks. So we had an opportunity to see the consequences of that. What is it like in a totalitarian country where the dictator can't pay his generals? That's not a good position for a dictator being. And what is the consequences in terms of the weapons systems? I talked to defectors who said that the missile program had come to a halt. Indeed, everything had come to a halt. Now finally, and this was back during the Bush administration, finally, the State Department convinced the government, the Treasury should be overruled, and those sanctions should be lifted because they presumed that that would show a good faith, you know, outreach to Kim Jong-un at the time, and that he would come to the table. It turns out that wasn't the case. But Stuart Levy was always upset about that because he felt that he'd come up with an answer through coercive diplomacy. So this legislation, which we passed through the committee unanimously in the last session, was actually opposed by the administration. They favored a more, you know, olive branch approach, as the Secretary of State shared with me. But we did pass it out, and then we passed it off of the floor of the House, 400 to 20, into the Senate. We could never get Harry Reid to bring it up in the Senate. But our feeling was that this approach would give us enough leverage in the deal to get out of North Korea, the concessions that we felt were necessary to really get the verification that the regime would give up on its quest to develop nuclear weapons. We are now going to start the process on Tuesday, where in our committee, as Vern has shared with you, we will hear from the Secretaries of State Energy and Treasury on the agreement. The agreement is just was publicized, you know, the prior Friday, we've got 159 pages to read through, some of it's coming out in the media. But our job now, in the, for the 44 members of my committee, is to go through that and come to a decision in the next 60 days, as the House and Senate will have to come to an ultimate decision. And with that, I think we've kicked it off, Vern, and maybe we can open it up for questions from those here.
Yeah, let me just tell you, what we usually try to do is take an hour and 15 minutes, and then Ed and I'll stay after for answering any other questions that anybody has. So that's kind of our goal. We want to get to as many folks as we can, not just questions, but get your comments as well, because that's just as important. Okay, so we got two gentlemen, I got some mics. So if you raise your hand, let's start moving the mics around a little bit. Just whoever you want to give it to.
My name is Louis Leffer. Ambassador Bolton was quoted as saying, "This deal is the Waterloo of American diplomacy." No one seems to believe the Iranians will keep up with the deal, which already is bad enough. We understand that intercontinental ballistic missiles are part of this deal, which of course has nothing to do with peaceful terms. And why the Iranians have decided to execute over 700 people, as reported by International Amnesty in the first six months, one begins to wonder, what are they afraid of? So I think, from reading what the events in the paper, I think everyone in the world seems to be convinced that the Iranians are cheat or lie, except for the people in the administration. The last point I'd like to make is, some people say there's no alternative to war. Well, we don't want war. But there are alternatives to this deal. And the alternative is a better deal.
Okay, let me, let me respond if I could, first to the issue of the 700 who were executed. Most of those are Baha'i and other religious minorities. The Iranian Revolutionary Government considers the Baha'i and other religious minorities to be apostates. And they have a sort of a state religion, as you know. And so, as a consequence, when they find people teaching, this is why one of the Americans are held, you know, there's four Americans held there. This particular American was a Christian, and he was, he was over there, and he attended a Christian prayer group meeting. So he's serving eight years. But for the Baha'i, frequently, the term is, you know, can be death, because what they're trying to do is practice or carry on their religion. And that's a felony in Iran. So that's, that's the reason they do the executions. In terms of the question of the agreement and whether Iran will cheat on the agreement, what we do know is that Iran has cheated on all of the past agreements. So we can, we start with that predicate. Now, now what we are going to look at is the, is the way in which international inspectors might be able to get into various facilities and have access. The question is, how quick is that access? From our standpoint, we asked for 24 hours, as you know from the reports, at this point, 24 days. But the other concerning question to us is not so much access to the existing site, it's access to the military site where other work may be carried out. This was the example with North Korea. We knew about, we knew about the main program. What we did not know was the uranium enrichment program that was being carried out in a separate military site underground. And so, hence the desire on our part to have those inspections that just could be called instantaneously. And there are 12 questions that the international inspectors, inspectors in the IAEA, that's the international organization that is given this responsibility, have asked Iran and tried to obtain now for a couple of years. Iran, under the interim agreement, was supposed to provide answers. We don't have answers yet. So this has still been kicked down the road. But they claim that they have 1,000 pages of evidence that Iran has tested these weapons, or tried to test weapons in order to develop the capability to miniaturize the weapon and put it on an ICBM. So we will have testimony on this issue next week. And then, the last issue that I think you alluded to there, was the question of the ICBM program. How did this get into the agreement? This was a surprise to all of us. It turns out, from what we've been able to learn so far, it's the Russians who at the 11th hour said, "Well, what about the separate UN sanctions on the arms embargo on Iran? As long as we're lifting this as it relates to their atomic weapon, why aren't we lifting it with respect to their arms and to the ICBM?" Because the Russians want to sell them this technology. Why? Because at this point, as I understand it, and we'll have an opportunity this, this week to get into this, but as I understand it, the Iranians have the capacity to fly their ICBMs up, but they can't target them. And Russia has the, has that technology. So the Russians could make tens of billions of dollars, presumably, if they could sell that to Iran as Iran continues to build out its ICBMs. And so, under the agreement, added at the 11th hour, and this is what held the agreement up apparently, was this additional Russian insistence that they be allowed to transfer, to sell that technology. So in the fifth year, they'll be able, Iran can buy or sell a lot of other conventional arms. But in the eighth year, they'll be able to do the ICBM program. And of course, in 10-plus years, years 12, 13, 14, at that point, the agreement becomes, begins to, you know, sunset. And Iran is treated as a normal NPT state. And, and the question then also is, well, how do you know? That's why we in the letter, the 367 members of Congress, 84% of Congress said, "Make sure this lasts multiple decades." Because we didn't, we want enough time to be sure that Iran is going to evolve and change. And if we don't have enough time, we're then still stuck with these ayatollahs who obviously are very, are very, very intransigent in terms of their positions.
Let me add one thing. I shared with Ed last night at dinner. I want him to get as much input to you as he can. But I made it very clear to Ed that one thing that's been very consistent with me and constituents in this region, I don't know about the rest of the country, but I can tell you about Sarasota, Manatee County, for the last eight, nine, 10 years, Friends of Israel, here, a lot of meetings I've had, or in Washington, been very consistent. They have a list of four or five things they'd like to have us consider. The thing at the top, by far, has been Iran. That's their biggest concern, is Iran, because of, they, so destabilizing to the whole region. Yeah, they're interested in some issues here, some aid, some other things. But at the top of the list, has been very consistent. And I shared that with Ed, because I wanted him to understand, that is a real big issue. And that's why I think this isn't going to go away. The next 60 or 90 days, we're going to weigh in on it. But I think a lot of the American people are going to have a chance to weigh in. And that's why it's important for you to weigh in on it today as well. So let's get a question on this side of the room. Yes, sir?
Hi, my name's Bailey, Norman Bailey. I have two, two issues. One is the two side agreements that we now understand, that of secret IAEA side agreements that have been put on the table. And we don't know what they are. And how do we just start any negotiation if you don't know what the basis of that negotiation is?
All right. So the, so part of the process Tuesday, as I understand it, members of Congress are going to be able to read the side agreement, right? As I suspect, these side agreements get into the details of what the IAEA is going to be allowed to do and not allowed to do. We want to know that. But there's another aspect of this, and I'm glad you brought this up. And that is Soleimani, Qassem Soleimani, is the head of the Quds forces, as you know. So we're also, it turns out, lifting sanctions on Soleimani. Now, wait a minute. Soleimani is responsible for the death of several hundred Americans, as well as many other people, because he runs the terrorist network of Quds Force, which operates outside of Iran, which is, which carries out activities in neighboring countries to try to overthrow other regimes and install pro-Iranian regimes. So we're going to want to look at that. And we're going to want to look at lifting the sanctions on the IRGC, which is the Iranian Revolutionary Guard Corps. One of the ways in which that society works is that the IRGC controls the franchises. So if you're a foreign company and you want to do businesses, you know, you've got business interests, you're probably going to be going through the IRGC. So who is going to be empowered in this agreement? Is it the people in Iran? Or is it the IRGC, which is an arm of the militia, of the government of Iran, and a particularly hard-edged arm at that? And so, these are some of the issues we'll be getting into.
Just one final one.
Yes?
Let me just add, just quick. Okay, well, let me just add, yeah, I think the administration made a mistake. They should have brought all the agreements out at one time. One thing you don't do, and been in business 30, 40 years, you don't have side agreements. And I think that's created a lot of angst with a lot of people. It needs to be full transparency. So the quicker those agreements are out there, so everybody can weigh in, the better. So go ahead.
Just final, Debica was reporting that there's a key clause in the main body of the final draft, that promises by the, the US made a promise to safeguard Iran's nuclear plants and facilities against terrorist attacks, outside disruptions, does that mean Israel? Or sabotage? I mean, what are we doing, putting ourselves protecting the Iranians?
As we know, one of the efforts, one of the efforts used, yeah. One of the efforts used through the internet was an effort which led reportedly to the centrifuges spinning ever faster and faster and faster, and right off their axis. And it knocked the Iranian program back, you know, a couple of years. So the question now is, well, wait a minute, if we're making a commitment that nobody is going to do that, whoa, put that in context of the parade, the Quds Parade, you know, the weekend before last. What happened in that parade? We know, because in the New York Times, if you want to pick up the story the next day, the reporter is out, he's out interviewing Rouhani about the future of the agreement. And Rouhani's marching in the parade, and he says the future looks very bright. But the reporter for the New York Times says that they're carrying placards that say, "Death to Zionism, Death to Israel." And the crowd in the background are chanting, "Death to America," as he's doing the interview. So the question is, if they're telegraphing that they're going to, in the parade, that they're going to try to destroy Israel, and if, as already was reported some weeks ago, that Iran has made the commitment to rebuild the tunnels, I was in one of those tunnels after the Gaza War. Those are expensive to build, those are very, very deep. So Iran has made the commitment to pay to rebuild them, and to replace the inventory of rockets to Hamas. And then at the same time, have said for Hezbollah, that they will transfer the guidance systems to Hezbollah, you know, so that they can now have not unguided missiles. I was, I was in Israel back during the Second Lebanon War, I've told Vern about this, I was in Haifa, and those rockets were coming in, Iranian-made rockets, 70,000 ball bearings in every one of them, were coming in and slamming into the center of town. There were 600 people in the trauma hospital. We do not want to have Iran transfer that technology, or have the money to transfer that technology. So if there's the capacity, if there's the capacity, you know, to use methodology to prevent Iran from advancing with its offensive capability, this will be another issue that we'll want to look at in the committee. So thanks for raising it.
We're going to alternate sides.
Good morning. Thanks so much Congressman Royce for coming, and thank you Congressman Buchanan for inviting him. My question is, why now? What was the impetus? What was the catalyst for going forward with talks with Iran now? It seemed like the sanctions were working. Is this just a matter of giving Kerry and Obama some sort of historic thing to put their name on? Why now?
The administration will explain that it's because, wait, the administration will explain it's because Iran is working on a weapon. And they're trying to freeze that weapon, right? They're trying to freeze it for the next 10-plus years, to give the international community time to figure out, you know, strategies to change Iran. My point was that we had legislation we had passed through the House that the administration opposed, which was coercive diplomacy, yes, in the sense that it was additional sanctions that would really have imploded the economy of the country. I felt we should use that as, as part of the negotiation strategy, and put that into law, so that we'd have more leverage. But that's the perspective.
Yeah, let me add this. I had the opportunity, we've traveled together, but this is another trip, a couple of months ago, I had the chance to meet with the Prime Minister of Israel, in Israel, for two hours, sitting right across from him with a couple of other members of Congress. And for two hours, he told us why this will be historically one of the worst deals we've ever been involved in, and in terms of our country. And he brought up at least six times, removing these sanctions and empowering their economy is going to give them more capability to move around more terror. And that's the, and he, you know, he's obviously very passionate. But he, you know, so I think about what he told me for two hours, I had a chance about a month earlier to meet with the Minister of Defense from Saudi Arabia, same thing. So we don't agree with everything with Israel, but we do agree on some stuff. We definitely agree on this, their concern. You look at Egypt. So common sense tells me, if you look around the Middle East, and a lot of those countries that know Iran probably better than a lot of us in the room do, say, "This is a bad deal." And I just take it as a business guy, look at it. If I had my partners in different deals, say, "You can't, don't do business with this person for these 88 reasons," why are we doing business with them? So it defies logic, and it gets back to her point, you know, why are we doing this? Why now? And I think hopefully this will come out, you know, coming up. I think we're going to go to this side.
Hi, my name is Robert Espaso. Thank you for coming, Representative Royce. And I'm glad you had us today. You know, what I don't understand, Iran is making trouble in different countries in the Middle East. You know it. Hezbollah, Yemen, they're putting their people over there, and they're doing irreparable damage. How the hell can you negotiate with them, knowing they're doing this? And then we're going to give them 150 billion dollars? You think this stuff is going to stop? It's going to keep on going, and worse, like you just said. But the main thing is, how the hell can you have a negotiation where you can't go look at their country in any place at any time? You got to wait 24 days? Are you kidding me? That's ridiculous.
We'll learn more about that process in our hearing, as we sort of dwell, you know, drill down on the question of how the inspections will work. We'll also learn more from the international inspectors. But you know my concern about the '94 framework agreement with North Korea, and about the way that turned out. So I want to make certain there is in fact a way to really verify. And if there's a suspicion about a military site, how will that work? How soon can they get access there? And we'll be, we'll be doing that hearing Tuesday. But thank you for bringing the question up.
But, okay, I'll try to get you.
Thank you. My statement is just very basic. How do we get started with this, when we said, "What about our American people over there, our guys?" We're not going to discuss that. No, that's a side issue. To me, I'm an old-fashioned military guy, we don't leave anybody behind. We don't negotiate until you let our people go. Thank you.
We had a, we had a hearing last, well, two weeks ago now. And we had family members from three of the families, and then we had the representative from the Washington Post, because the Washington Post reporter is being held there. And as a matter of fact, I think his, his trial may conclude, his second trial may conclude on Monday. But the administration tells us that they've brought that issue up at every single meeting that they've attended. But, but the fact remains that Iran is still holding these Americans. And it is very reminiscent of what happened in the 80s, starting in 1979, when they took the US hostages and held them. And it also reflects an attitude, an adversarial attitude from the regime towards the United States. And when, when they're saying, you know, in answer to some of these questions, "America is the great Satan," it does indicate that at least the governing, you know, class in Iran has not changed from 1979 in terms of that kind of conduct and attitude.
Let's get this gentleman here, let's get this gentleman and this lady, because I just want to make sure I can kind of see all the faces up here.
I don't think anybody in this country thinks this is a good deal. And I've communicated from the Northeast, California, to the Midwest. Realistically though, what can you in Congress do to derail it? The administration wants it, period.
Well, our, our role is to get all the details out before the population and before the members of the committee. And just as sometimes, like our legislation, which myself and Eliot Engel had crafted, bipartisan legislation, the consensus at that time of our committee was not with Senator Kerry's position, but instead, that they would unanimously pass that bill out of committee, and we passed it 400 to 20, off the floor of the House of Representatives. So we will have to see how members come down after we have the exhaustive process of going through all of the aspects of this agreement. And if at the end, the two-thirds of the Congress disagree, then we will probably go back to an approach, you know, more like the one that Eliot and I had originally crafted. If on the other hand, they don't agree, and the, and the general public don't agree, and it goes the other way, then, then the process would go forward, and this would become, this would become fait accompli. So we'll just, we'll see how that process goes. But we know our responsibility in this come Tuesday morning.
Well, let me just say, the President says he's going to veto it. So now you got to get two-thirds in the House and the Senate. My sense is, and I just, just my own sense, I think the House, we're probably going to be okay in. I think it's going to come down to the Senate. And one of the folks, the senators I'm watching closely is Chuck Schumer. So we'll see kind of what happens, but some others as well. But I, it's going to, because that's going to be the battle over there, you know, what are they going to do?
And what else comes out?
Yeah, what else comes out, yeah.
Because we're going to learn more about the side agreements and so forth, so.
This is the first, you know, this last week, so we got, you know, 60 days, people are going to be able to weigh in. And I can tell you, if it becomes a groundswell, my And I can tell you, if it becomes a groundswell, my sense of it, that's why I'm doing this today.
The gentleman really asked my question, but I want to refine that. Before that, I want to thank you Congressman Royce. I'm very thrilled with your proposal for coercive diplomacy. And I also have great respect that you're running your committee in a bipartisan manner. I'm appalled at how partisan things are. But I'm also feeling like the American people are kind of like Charlie Brown in the football. Obama has just, you know, he's an incredible politician, just incredible, who knows how to work all the angles. And doing this as an executive agreement rather than a treaty and running it through the UN and getting the approval there, which makes it harder to overturn here, I'm afraid if we operate our government the way it was intended to, with consensus, the vote wins, all that, we're going to have the football yanked out in front of us again and we're going to have this deal. And I personally would like to see a clever and aggressive policy to defeat this. And this is to you, Representative Buchanan. One of the things that I read in an article this week, this is giving me hope. I mean, I've been really depressed about this and hearing your coercive diplomacy gives me hope. But again, I think we're going to get snookered. And one of the solutions I read in a, that was published in the Jerusalem Post, talked about, instead of making this an executive action, make it a treaty. I mean, who gets to decide whether it's an executive action or a treaty? And my understanding of the difference in this is the executive action, you have to get two-thirds to override it. With the treaty, it works the opposite, so it puts the burden on the supporters of the opponent, of the existing deal. If it's a treaty, it kind of like flips.
But the court gets to decide. And our problem here is with the court and their attitude in the past, for example, the North Korean agreement was not a treaty. These other, a lot of these have not been handled as treaties. And when we appeal to the court, what the justices say is, well, that's for the executive branch and the legislative branch to work out. Well, we don't, you know, in other words, we're not going to win in front of this court. So that's why. And we'd find out the answer to that about two years from now, long after this agreement is...
My name is Al Foster. I'm one of We the People here in Manatee County. I think we're probably all here in agreement that this Iran deal is not good for America, not good for Israel, and a lot of other nations. So the real question is, why are we here? I'm here to encourage you to do something about this. The Constitution is clear, the President's number-one goal is to protect the American people. He is in violation of the Constitution. Constitution also, the Constitution also outlines what you can do about that, and that's to impeach our President.
Let me say something. Let me say, let me say that, let me say something, and that is that elections have consequences. Elections have consequences. And we have a process in this country where we go to the polls and we pick a President who is going to be the Commander-in-Chief. I would suggest that those who disagree with the direction, get involved in something that is going to be consequential, which is picking a President, you know, who you agree with, whether you're a Democrat or a Republican. But I would just give you that insight, that that will have an impact. And that is something that is, you know, from the beginning of this country, what did Jefferson say? Every individual has a responsible, responsibility to get educated as a citizen, get involved in the process, and then be active politically. And in so doing, you have an opportunity to put the individual in office who represents your philosophy and to change the minds of your fellow citizens, to change their outlook. So I would suggest changing the minds of the majority of the country so that they in fact agree with you is the best place to start. That's why I, I got to tell you, Vern holds a lot of these town meetings, I appreciate it, because obviously he gets a lot of input from people on this. But I do think changing people's attitudes starts with having a dialogue with them and getting them in an attitude where they can listen to what you're saying and can figure out how that can change policy.
It's true, though, that we elect representatives to act on our behalf. One of the things I would like you to do to act on my behalf is to impeach the President.
Well, let me, let me explain to you that you just, you just went through an election cycle in which you had an opportunity to convince your fellow citizens to vote in favor of your position. And I don't think that we did enough to talk to our neighbors, to our coworkers, to patiently walk them through the process, to talk to our nieces and our nephews about these issues and convince them so that a majority were convinced of certain positions. Now that's just me, that's my perspective on this, but I'm just sharing with you my viewpoint.
Where's the, you know, this gentleman here? Okay, you're in the lineup.
I have a feeling that I'm a minority position here. The purpose of the negotiations or of the sanctions was to bring Iran to the negotiating table. That was accomplished. The purpose of the negotiations was to have an agreement which would stop their development of a nuclear weapon and prevent it in the future. That's subject to the debate, and of course, I commend you Chairman Royce for how you're going to conduct your hearings. My question is this, if the Congress rejects the agreement and the US can then put the sanctions in place, continue with them, according to Secretary Kerry, that's not going to bring Iran back to the negotiating table. So, my question, assuming that is the case, Iran then is free to proceed with developing a nuclear weapon, can have a weapon within three months as I understand it, and then the alternative, you can answer this certainly, my question is, what is the alternative other than military action under that scenario?
And in my, in my view, the alternative, because they do not have delivery capability yet, right, with their ICBM program, they can't target, they can't, they haven't miniaturized it. They could maybe get to the point, and maybe it's three months, where they could do a test. But they haven't got there yet. What I am suggesting, what I am suggesting and what we were going to do with the coercive diplomacy of imploding their economy, was to work off of the presumption that the polling we see from Gallup, which shows that two-thirds of the country want a Western-style democracy without a theocracy. And I'm pretty confident of that polling, it's been done by different international groups, it usually comes out the same way. It looks as though this is not unlike the situation that existed in Eastern Europe. Years ago, in the early 80s, I was on an exchange program in East Germany. And I watched the type of coercive diplomacy which Reagan was using, along with the broadcasts that he was doing into the country. He was taken as a society not unlike this one, where two-thirds of the people disagreed with the regime but couldn't do anything about it. And Reagan was, with this public diplomacy concept and coercive diplomacy, ratcheting that up to 80, 85%. And it actually led to a situation where there was a different future. The broadcasts about political pluralism, tolerance, all of these issues, and the news about what was really going on in that society, every day changed the dynamics in Poland, in East Germany, and in Russia. And so you had, now, we're not doing that anymore, it's now practically defunct, that kind of an approach. But what I was going to suggest is if you implode the economy and give them a choice between survival or economic collapse, that can be done. And it would take them additional time to really get this into a utilizable framework. We may have a conflict of visions on that, but I know a number of other policy people that have my perspective on that. Go ahead, follow-up question, go ahead.
But you're saying that the US sanctions are going to be strong enough to force them back to the table?
And I say that for this reason, and I'm going off of some of the attitudes of Stuart Levy on this, but his belief is that no company or country, given a choice, if we actually do this in law, are you going to do business with the United States or are you going to be permanently cut out of the US market in order to do business with Iran? That no one can afford to make that choice. And his test case was that period of time when he put sanctions on North Korea. So there's a number of us that believe that that kind of leverage brought to the equation could get us where we need to go. And so...
Let me add, you made the administration's point. And their point is, if we don't take this deal, because I've heard it, if we don't take this deal, it's not the best deal in the world, gives us some time, could lead to worse things. Worse things, military action or whatever, not only Israel but ourselves being involved. That's their point. The Chairman offers another potential. But I, again, this is very early in the process, that's why we're here getting the input. Gentlemen.
Congressman Don Armanak from Venice, thank you for coming today. And the gentleman's question, your response fits perfectly to my question. The administration, as you just said, says this is the deal, we don't have any alternative. Today you present coercive diplomacy and the response, the follow-on, and this is how we move from where we are today to the other alternative. This is the first time I am hearing the alternative. What we hear from Obama, Kerry, their acolytes, and much of the media is, the other side can only say no. So my question is, do you have a plan, do you, the bipartisan members of Congress who oppose this deal, have a strategy, have a plan for getting the alternate message out to the population of the United States so that they can understand that there is something other than no, so that they can understand there is a method to it? And to your response on impeachment, how do we go about mobilizing the population of the United States, getting them informed to be able to help you? Because it's not just the members of Congress who are going to have to do this.
Help educate people on this issue.
So when do you watch the media response that there is something else to this?
Yes. One of the things that going forward, we're going to be doing besides these hearings, are rolling out to the media, to CNN, and I've, between CNN and Fox and Morning Joe, I've probably done 100 television hits on the subject of Iran or on the subject now of what we want to do as an alternative. But we're going to be picking that up. And now that people are focusing on it, there's going to be much, a tremendous amount of coverage. So the time is right, right now, for people to get involved in an alternative in which we say, we want a better deal. We want a deal that's verifiable. We want a deal in which there's not a signing bonus for Iran, et cetera, you know? And so I think, I think you make a very good case, how do we enlist others besides those of us on the committee who have articulated this position? What's the force multiplier? And I think the force multiplier are the organizations around the country that are concerned about this issue. And my appeal to them and to you is, if you're concerned about this, get involved in it. Talk to your senators about it, your House members, but also talk to your friends, neighbors, begin that process of more deeply educating people about, you know, the challenge presented by the Iranian regime and Iranian attitude. Let's get them up to speed, they're paying attention right now.
I would just add to your point, the administration, Kerry and the administration, had a running start. They knew the deal, we got the deal this last week or so. So now we're having to react to the deal. It's just interesting, we set this up, I didn't plan on this weekend, and I got the 80-page or the 100-page deal sitting out in the van, looking through it. But my point is, we're getting it, now we're going to have to react to it, but one of the best ways to react to it is to get the input and the passion, which I thought this is where it was going to be in this community, but I wanted to hear the Chairman hear this. Yeah, this gentleman here.
My name's Lou Kurtzog and I'm from Venice. And one of the things I'm a little confused with is the fact that Obama appeared to do an end run to the UN. With that movement, he kind of gave permission to the Europeans and other people that are interested in doing business with Iran, to go ahead and go at it and have at it and do it. So in effect, he'll come back and he'll say to the Republican Party, well, you guys, you know, you screwed it all up. However, what I'm wondering is, with all your work that you're doing now with this town hall and then with what you're going to do down in, with your committee meetings, what will you really accomplish? Can you beat that end run? Can you beat the world in this?
Yeah, that's the question, right? Whenever you go into any of these debates, any of these challenging situations, can you convince the country? Can you articulate this in a way that brings the country with you in terms of your vision as opposed to someone else's? And we're going to find that out, but as Vern has just shared with you, as information tumbles out about the agreement, we're going to learn a lot more and so is the American public. As we start our hearings on Tuesday, the people are going to learn a great deal about exactly what is in this. And as a consequence, if the majority of Americans decide that they're opposed to this, there is no doubt in my mind that I think at that point, it begins to move towards the numbers in the House and Senate necessary to try an approach that I think is going to be effective in dealing with the Ayatollah.
Let me add, if we took the vote today, it'd be pretty close. Take the vote in 60 days, I think it's a different scenario, just my opinion. You know, once you're up there for a while, you get that sense, again, it's just my opinion. So we're going to see democracy in action, I think, in the next 60 days. This gentleman right here.
Hi, Dr. Deutsch, where's Ollie North when we really need him? Two things. One is your point that the majority of the Iranian people are actually our allies. I'm a physician and I have Iranian friends, and that is absolutely spot-on. And if you remember earlier, Iran was on the verge of electing a parliament and all of the people that would have constituted a majority for an American-style republic were then decertified as not being holy enough. So the last thing you want to do is throw those people under the bus with an agreement that's going to give 100 billion plus to the religious leaders that are fomenting all of the problems in the Middle East. And it's very important for the American people, I think, to realize that that's what we're doing. In terms of the, the second thing is, in terms of the making of the bomb, even though they could put together something in three months, they don't have the capacity to produce it. They may put one bomb together. So we're trying to prevent something that's really not happening. And from what I read, they stopped their nuclear bomb program, both the CIA and Mossad agree on that, about 2008. So we're trying to prevent something that is really not happening at the moment. They're about to cave, and this is the first time I've heard of coercive diplomacy. If you can succeed in selling that idea and in carrying it forward, I think that's the best way to deal with Iran.
I think, I think we, Dr. Deutsch, I think on the first part of your observations about the people in Iran, I've long thought that our malfeasance in our strategy and foreign policy has been not in figuring out ways to do for them what we did... to do for them what we did for Vakhlov Havel and Lekhvalenza, which was to help get that message out to the Poles and the Czechs and, you know, to the Eastern Europeans. We have not replicated the success we had in the past. We knew how to do it, we forgot how to do it. And we're not doing it. And so you're right. At the end of the day, in my opinion, they're the great losers in this because they have nothing to benefit from increasing the, the control that the Ayatollah has. Now, we'll hear the administration's case and they might argue, "Well, this 10 years will give us a chance. Most of that money will go into butter rather than guns." That was an example they gave. But clearly it'll go into both. It'll go into both. And so that's, that's, that's the first point. The second point, we're going to hear from the administration. Clearly the centrifuges are spinning. Clearly they have a lot of centrifuges. And so we'll, we'll have to drill down to find out how close they are to that weapon. But like you, I suspect it would take a great deal of additional work to miniaturize it, put it on ICBM. We know they can't target it yet. So we might have additional time for coercive diplomacy in terms of really bringing the economy to a collapse as we did in North Korea.
One other thing.
Yes.
You talked about Jefferson talking to people to talk to each other.
Yeah.
What changed that was when the Congress allowed for there to be corporations as individuals contributing mega millions of dollars to campaigns.
So your thought would be that the contributions should only come from individuals?
Correct.
And then, but with that, would there also be a change so that there isn't a coercive approach where members in, in a union are, are forced to pay dues? Or would that be a voluntary?
Yeah.
You know, if, if you start down the road of figuring out how, if your thesis is that you're only going to power the individual, can you do it in a way in which no other institution can be coercive on the individual, whether it's the union or the company?
There have been some, some instances where the unions had to cease demanding that the dues be spent. And in California, they were spending the dues of the unions outside of California for political purposes.
Let me just add, because people, a couple of people brought up the idea of whether they have the bomb or not. I don't know, it's three months, six months, nine months. But I do know one thing. For 10 years, I've been hearing six months or in a matter of a year, Israel's going to have to go and deal with this, with the US or not. And my sense, I get back to my earlier statement, they've been our best allies, our best friends in the Middle East. I don't know why we don't work with them and listen to them. It just defies logic, you know, from that standpoint. One more?
This question and one more.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Cindy Skarda and I have a couple...
I think I've heard from you before, Cindy.
I think you have. Well, I appreciate...
She's the only one who goes to every town hall.
Well, I'm a very concerned citizen.
No, I'm just kidding.
You know, I think America is very concerned about the direction of our country. And we're all scared to death. That's why we're here. But I appreciate you for holding these town halls all the time and giving a voice to us out here in the audience. So thank you. And your office takes calls, so I'm very appreciative. I think Congress needs to hear the outrage from the American people. Couple things. You know, we have a, the Iranians have, have no verifiable evidence that they would ever uphold their obligation to any treaty, any agreement. They are deceitful, they lie. They are constantly deceiving you. So I don't know how you come to the table in good faith. I don't know how Congress comes to the table in good faith when you have President Obama, who has two side deals that Congress isn't privy to. He constantly goes around, circumvents Congress, renders you ineffective. He, he let out five of the top terrorists in the world without ever coming to Congress, which Dianne Feinstein even admitted that that was against the law. So he has not shown a good faith to even come and talk to Congress when he goes to the UN, when he decides to call this not a treaty. So I don't think there's any good faith evidence from the administration that they're negotiating good faith with Congress. And this gentleman, yes, we have an election. Election has consequences. But now, you have to deal with what's in front of you right now. And as a Congress and the House and the Senate that has an equal co-branch of government, as long as the, you have a responsibility to the people of this country to uphold your obligation.
That is correct.
Also, even Secretary Rice said that, that $150 billion would be used to continue terrorism in the world and against the United States. Even Obama said, "Those five top terrorists will go on to commit terrorist attacks against the United States of America." When is it that we start saying, "Is he aiding and abetting the enemy?" When we have a porous border, when terrorists are coming across our porous border? We've had deals since 2006, the Secure Fence Act of 2006 that was supposed to address a porous border. Time and time again, Congress won't, won't secure the border. It's not that you can't...
Whoa, 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 whoa. Hold on, hold on, because I was the co-author of the amendment, so let's, you know. And Duncan Hunter was the original author of the amendment. And that was not enforced by either the Bush administration or the Obama administration. And what is, what is the recourse under our system of government? Is to go to the courts. Is to go to the courts. And when I say elections have consequences, they do, including the court. And what we're trying to do in the court is to get the court to recognize, and we're in the process of doing this right now on a series of laws, where we go before the court with the position that we have in Congress. But I, a lot of this does take us back to my original point, which I think is, is a truism. We've got to carry the country with us on issues that we're feeling passionate about. That's why it's important we go through the process of holding the hearings, doing the town meetings, going up on CNN, going up on Fox, going on MSNBC, explaining these issues to the public and rallying the public to an understanding. And the issues are going to come out during the hearings that we commenced on Tuesday, including the sidebar agreements here. And I think my concerns are your concerns with the sidebar agreements. And I think getting them out in front of the public is our first order of business.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
I know it's not an easy task to impeach the president. But when you have an administration that continually ignores the rule of law time and time and time again, when he has, his Department Head of ICE sits in front of the Senate floor and says, "We will not uphold the rule of law. We will not do anything about sanctuary cities until you come to a comprehensive immigration agreement." That's holding the Congress, that's like extortion.
And, and we have courts. You concede this point to me. We have courts in this country. And we take issues to the Supreme Court of the United States. And I would hope that we can win on these issues in the Supreme Court of the United States.
There, that she sits there and tells you she's not going to uphold the rule of law?
As you can see, the whole case that we're presenting on issues, frankly, that go to the national security of the United States, we're presenting them in a way that the public can understand these issues and then rally to a position so that we can change the direction of, you know, the course, so that we are no longer in a position that we're not, we're not protecting the country, the security of the country. That's what we're trying to do. And absent convincing the majority of people, I don't know another solution to that that is going to work. It seems to me that convincing the public is the answer. And it seems to me that a lot of people have a lot of energy and we talk to our friends with this energy. But we need to go out and talk to our neighbors, as I said before, with our sons and daughters and nieces and nephews. And we need to be patient with them and we need to get them educated and walk them through the process. And then, for those of us that are concerned about national security, we need to win elections on that issue. That's the way forward, in my humble opinion.
Let me, we're going to try to get a few more, but I will make one point that you made, now you think. When you sign an agreement with somebody or an agreement, the agreement is only as good as the two parties involved. To me, if you've got somebody on the other side, they, they get out of an agreement 88 ways. There's plenty of lawyers and everything else. So if you're dealing with someone you don't trust with, why are you doing it? Because they're going to hold everybody else to a standard. They're not going to hold, you know, Iran to that standard. We want to move on, but you...
Last question, last question over here on that side. Last question over there.
We want to give everybody a chance. So let's, right here.
My name's Randy Tucker. I think a truism is know thy enemy. In World War II, it didn't seem that Neville Chamberlain knew Hitler. And that's why he appeased him. And that's why so much bloodshed. And it seems, gentlemen, that maybe Congress, the Republican section thereof, does not know the enemies. We think you know that Moscow is an enemy. We think you know Tehran is an enemy. Do you know that President Obama is likewise?
Now, I think, I think in response to that...
Let me explain, let me explain that, if I may. Someone who lies to get what he wants, that's the end justifies the means. We've seen that in history. We're seeing it now. The end justifies the means. Those of us that believe the Bible don't do that. But how do we oppose it? We oppose it by the laws of the Constitution. You say elections have consequences. We elected a majority of Republicans for Congress, Senate and House. Why did the Constitution formers put impeachment in the Constitution if Congress is not supposed to do it? But wait till the next national...
In 1936, when Churchill gave his speech about the dangers of German rearmament and what was happening with the Luftwaffe, Chamberlain went to the floor of the House and said, "Winston's the war monger. The war monger is not Adolf Hitler. It's Winston." Winston Churchill then went back to the floor of the House of Commons and said, "No, no, no. I'm explaining the threat from German rearmament and from this Luftwaffe. And I'm suggesting that we'd better have a credible defense." What makes conflict more likely, what makes it more likely is to deny the reality of it, to point the finger at me, basically, is what he was saying. But nevertheless, Winston Churchill had a responsibility. He couldn't just turn around and say, "Well, Neville Chamberlain is, you know, is going to have to be removed." Neville Chamberlain, no. He had to go out and convince the British public that there was a credible threat to the country. Wasn't enough that he didn't agree with, you know, with the attitude of Chamberlain and what Chamberlain was doing, flying out, you know, to, to meet and wave that paper, "We have peace in our time," as Chamberlain said. No. What he did was he got out of the House of Commons and he went out across the entire country, as Margaret Thatcher once told us. And he went district by district by district explaining to people the problem. And what he was saying was, "We have to have a plan for what's happening with German rearmament." I would just say that that sounded to me like a credible approach. He didn't even stop there. He flew here. He went around the country here and explained that problem. And a generation later, when it came to the Iron Curtain, he came here to the United States as well as Britain to explain the next generation's challenge. But he did it through information, through what he wrote, through his broadcasts, through those personal appearances around the, around the UK and around the United States. I think the credible answer to this is getting out and educating people on the issues we feel passionate about. And that's, that's, I think, what history shows works.
I want to take a couple more questions and then we'll be around. I want to get people that haven't had a chance. Let's get the gentleman in the back.
Can I hold it? Okay. Thank you Congressman Buchanan for having this open session where we can bring our issues up to you. There are three issues I want to take. We've spent the whole time talking about the Middle East, but there are a couple other things too. I think you offered us the opportunity to say something else too. One, the thing about the Middle East that really concerns me and about the Ayatollahs and Iran is that they have not to date renounced their intent to wipe Israel off the map. That concerns me greatly. And if we are able to add anything to this agreement as you study it, I think that needs to be put into there that they renounce that so that Israel feels more secure. Two, we talked about, you just mentioned Chamberlain and Hitler. Right now, we have a little Hitler in Moscow. He is threatening all of Europe. He's flying his planes past the United States on 4th of July, England. He's threatening Sweden that if Sweden joins NATO that he's, there's going to be consequences. He has, he has signed an agreement He has, he has signed an agreement together with the United States and Great Britain that they will honor Ukraine's territorial integrity. He broke that agreement. He invaded Crimea. He took over Crimea. Now, he is supporting the terrorists and separatists, Russian ethnic separatists in eastern Ukraine. And to date, the latest news is that he's continuing to provide them with heavy weaponry. The United States Congress, Peter Poroshenko was in Congress a few months ago, presenting his case. Both Houses of Congress support providing lethal weaponry to Ukraine. The gentleman in the White House refuses to provide it. I don't know why. Can Congress do something about that, to provide the weaponry that we certainly need to provide Ukraine to defend their territorial integrity?
Yes. And I, I've been, go ahead. Your last point.
Thing that really concerns me, concerns not the other nations of the world, but concerns our nation. We were started as a nation under God by Christian people, the Puritans, the pilgrims, the Quakers, the English, the Catholics. The 13 colonies were all Christian colonies. We have the First Amendment, which gives us freedom of religion, something that the, the government takes away from American citizens when they join the military. And right now, there is a concerted effort on the part of the administration to take away our clergyman's right to the First Amendment and to preach as Christians and to preach in a Christian chapel and to use the name of Jesus, that they're being persecuted for this. And I think we need to stop this administration from continuing down that path. We need to stop taking the Ten Commandments off many of the court walls, and we need to do as exactly what President Lincoln said in his, everybody should read the Thanksgiving Day memorandum that President Lincoln signed. We need to repent as a nation and get right with God again. Thank you.
Okay, let me, let me respond if I could. I took a delegation into eastern Ukraine, and I can tell you that even the Russian-speaking Ukrainians in Nipropetrovsk, which is the, which is the farthest east major industrial city. It's right up, close to Luhansk and Donetsk. I talked with the mayor, the governor, the women's groups, minority groups, Jewish groups, every association that could meet with our delegation. They all told us the same thing, which is Putin is recruiting every skinhead, every malcontent. We're Russian-speaking Ukrainians of the east, but this has to stop, that we're arresting them, we're arresting them because we can tell by their Moscovite accent, they don't have the Ukrainian-Russian accents. We're holding them in the brig, but that's not our problem. Our problem is the regular Russian army that is in the east now. And our antidote to that is precision-guided anti-tank weapons. Because we're, you know, when there's a cost, the aggression stops. But if there is no cost, it will continue to accelerate. And so, in the National Defense Authorization Act, we have put in legislation for those precision-guided weapons. In the meantime, I have had meetings with the Ukrainian community that is involved in helping to secure those weapons as well. But I think part of the answer here, as you point out, a very big part of it, is those precision-guided anti-tank weapons are remarkably effective in carrying out a cost which the Russian army does not want to bear. And that is the best way, with the sanctions we already have on Russia, to leverage them, to get them to cease and desist and to pull out of Donetsk and Luhansk.
We're going to take, I'm trying just to get somebody, the gentleman in the back. I just want to try to give everybody one chance.
Hi, I'm Stanley Wright. I live in Bradenton, and I've had the pleasure of being in the congressman's office and speaking with him there. You may not remember, but I enjoyed it, and your office is always open, as well as your correspondence, which is wonderful. And I thank you both for coming. My concern is that I have personally, and I agree with the congressman from California, that it's our responsibility to get out and to try to get other people to feel as we do. And I do that on a daily basis, but I'm also trying to do it with our senators and congressmen. Now, in our state of Florida, I have written to both of my Congress, both of my senators, as well as to Chuck Schumer at length, and I have gotten a wonderful reply immediately, well, I agree in everything and not from Senator Rubio. I have not heard from either the other senator from the state of Florida or from Schumer. I wanted to know what we can do relative to the Senate in order to get a two-thirds majority. You must have some recommendations, doing other things. We can't wait for another election. So what can we do as individuals to see that we get to two-thirds? And I'm hoping, God willing, that you're correct, that this is the feeling we have today, and the 60 days or 50 days from now, we maybe will have a difference. Because I heard Chuck Schumer speak, saying all the things that we all agree on relative to this question, and now, he's gone.
Or now, now, we, we don't know where he stands at this moment, is the, is the way, I think, things stand. But to the extent that we move the needle across the country and public opinion moves to a position where most people end up agreeing with our position, I think that that would amplify over all states. I think there's a real advantage to doing that. But I think it's going to be particularly acute in New York because there's a tremendous amount of focus on terrorism in New York post 9/11. And so, to the extent that this, this question of the national security of the United States becomes the issue and is debated across the country, I think it helps across the board.
I just add, it's not my sense, it's not just the intensity in this room. I think we're going to see this intensity across the country. This is going to be a wave. That's just my opinion. And I, the reason I brought Chuck Schumer, not to pick on Chuck Schumer, but the bottom line, he does influence a lot of other members in the Senate. And I think that's going to be, what I've heard up there on the Hill, is going to be a little bit more of the challenge. I think the House, just in talking general, I don't know this, but just my sense of it, we're going to be in better shape, but it's going to come down probably what happens in the Senate. Let me say this, we're going to stay around for a half hour. I just want to thank everybody for any, and if you've got any questions or comments, you're welcome to come up. Thanks for coming. Let's give the chairman a big round of applause. Thank you. Hey, thanks. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.